This is a required part of the Head Start Act to actually conduct what's called training of our governing board, which is a school board. So thank you for making time. I'm Dr. Robert Cantwell and with me tonight are Nancy Grobel, Business Operations Analyst, or Analyst, and Leann Martin, our Family Services Manager. And also want to introduce Dr. Glasgow, who's our Executive Director overall, with us, Director of PPK for our technicals. And our Board Liaison this year is Director Amy Valet. So thank you for agreeing to that assignment. So we look forward to that pretty much, too. But first, I'd like to let Dr. Glasgow speak to the slide to give us some overall context.
Yeah, I wanted to just take a second to really quickly situate for you guys where Head Start sits within the larger PPS pre-K landscape. So we currently have 44 pre-K classrooms in PPS that are ours, run by our district. Thirty-six of those are Head Start classrooms. They're funded by state and federal Head Start funds. And the income cap is 100% of federal poverty for eligibility into those programs. And you can see where they're located on this slide. Eight of our classrooms right now at three different sites are funded through a state grant called Preschool Promise, which has a slightly higher income cap. You guys can see there. And then I did just want to touch on, I think you're all aware, coming soon is Preschool For All. So as you all know, we just voted that into existence in Multnomah County. The application for initial pilot sites is being released this week. We'll be applying to try to get some additional classrooms from Preschool For All added to the PPS landscape this coming fall. And you can see that it's a slightly higher income cap there. So we're working on kind of growing our landscape. Preschool For All will continue to roll out over the next 10 years. So it'll be a continual flow of expanded seats. And then that's kind of the big landscape. And then Robert's going to focus in just on the Head Start piece for you today because that's what this conversation is about. But just know, our goal is to keep expanding and to do what we want. Access for all and parity across all our programs. So we have sort of a way that we do pre-K in PPS and get students ready to enter up into our K-5 programs.
May I ask if there's a decision-making process for colors 10 Preschool For All sites are chosen? It says that the income caps are higher than based on the federal poverty, whatever the nexus, but how are we looking at where those tend to be?
Yeah, well, so we will, we will start all week with trying to make sure that our high-ethnic families, our families of color, our families with students with disabilities are prioritized for all of our funded seats in pre-K. So just because the income seat can go that high doesn't mean that's where we'll start, right? We'll have prioritized enrollment. We're working with, and we have been for years, working with the PPS Space Committee, working with the various enrollment and boundary committees to think about, as well as the Preschool For All, kind of Multnomah County level assessment of where need is across the county, to figure out where we should situate the next seats as they become available. We're probably looking at somewhere up to five new classrooms next year and then continuing, you know, over the next several years to add more sites. We're looking to quickly add in committee for Southeast next year, but more to come on that. That's the application on roles and we find out when we get allocated. And I know, I know you need to talk about Head Start, Robert, so I want you to be able to do that.
Sure, no problem. Thank you, Emily, for that. And so tonight, the focus is Head Start. And we're just going to share a little bit more about who, what, when, why, and how. And talking about the shared governance model and your role as our governing body. So those are our learning objectives for tonight. So to the who, we have 760 students and families in our program across those nine sites and 36 classrooms. Currently, 58% of our families are families of color. Thirty-nine percent of our students are dual-language learners. And 100% are income eligible, as you saw on the previous slide and the results. We have about 180 staff in our program, so we're large across those nine sites, including teachers, educational assistants, family services workers, health consultants, administrators, clerical support, two more salesmen, contract with them, with Steve. And all staff, except for our contractors, are PPS employees. All our employees go on to PAT or PFOSB. That's part of our relationship with the district. We have over 100 community partners as well that we work with throughout the year. And as always, children and families are at the center of our work. So let's get to our what. Unlike some other early learning programs that are in existence, Head Start is mandated to provide services and support in specific areas. We are required to be a family wraparound program. So what you see up there is a graphic with some of our service areas, education, health and mental health, family supports, and then our children with learning differences. So we're required to provide those support and services. So and as we mentioned before, we have 36 classrooms. Thirty-one are full day, five are half-day programs with a morning and afternoon. And so to the when, we follow the school calendar, just like K-12. We have the same school calendar. We don't have services in the summer, unlike other Head Start programs that might be rerun because our grantee is the school district and our place, our school district. We've already talked about our site locations. And our why, here's our vision and mission. A guide, a guide to the work. The how is around our offering high-quality family support services and engagement following the parent, family, and community engagement framework. In this picture, you can see one of our enrichment teachers looking at a student's educational system, creating an art piece out in the atrium over at Clarendon for the level of K-10. Here's the, here's the parent, family, and community engagement framework that we follow. That's our guide. And I'm sorry to go fast. We started late and we just don't have a lot of time together, so I'm going to try and get these points and bolts for you all. We also utilize a research-based curriculum, tools of mind, which we're required to do as part of Head Start. Yeah, lots of community partnerships. What you see here is our dental partner, D3, conducting dental screenings for our students at some of our sites for free at no cost.
What happens if there's something found? If you then partner with the dentist to help?
Yes, there's a referral process and we also track that monthly. So as you'll see in the directives, you pull every month. I have to pull out, I have to share with me. So here's how many dental screenings we did, here's how many clothes, here's how many follow-up happened. So it's really thorough process. We're about a $12 million program with various funding sources. And here you can see our funding sources. So federal funds, state funds are about the same. We have a small, important children's levy grant that funds four of our classrooms. We have a little bit of type of one money for a total of about $10 million. And then down below that, you see two of the one-time COVID funds that have come our way. So the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, and you have almost $90,000, and then there are the rest of the plan of funds. We have a two-year project period for those funds and we've already started surveying community, our policy council, parents, and our staff on ideas for what would be best to meet our community needs in terms of use of those funds. And to kind of go along with Emily's comments earlier, the lower left is where Head Start sort of sits within sort of OTL, the Office of Teaching and Learning. So down below up there is where Head Start sits. So what's coming next, our slides is our abbreviated version of the Program Management Fiscal Operations Training that I accessed. So we're just going to go through basically structure, processes, and relationships. That's going to be the core of our presentation. So leadership and governance. That's why I'm here tonight, just to talk about our governance model. We have to have oversight. And so the entities which you'll see in the slide coming up here are our management team, which is our leadership team at Head Start. We kind of take care of the daily operations. We make decisions at the lower level just to make sure that everybody is, all the systems are working and everybody is safe and learning and families are getting the services they need. And then you also see Policy Council, our Parent Policy Council, which is an elected board of parents. And that helps set our program direction. That's that first bullet there. The second bullet really describes your role, where you exercise fiscal and legal oversight for our program. And that's accomplished through you specifically, but also through the District Departments of Finance, the legal department, HR. That's the nice thing about our relationship, is those things are built in. And so we try to take a balance with a situation of voices to ensure input. Many of you familiar with the packets that come to you for approval, you approval, things like we need to apply for a federal grant, we got policy council permission, do we have no approval to do so? Usually you say yes, and then we can move forward with that application. Anytime we develop or change a policy, we do the same thing. And you'll see that in the next slides here. We use this wheel to kind of help us remember our management systems. That outer blue circle is what we're really focused on tonight, which is leadership and governance. Everything inside, it contains our systems, all those little aquamarine segments are more of our systems like HR, finance, vacations. And again, those are partnerships with PPS. And then in the inner dark circle, those are Head Start-specific things like ERSI, E-R-S-I-A. That's the work that Leann oversees, things like eligibility and recruitment, selection, enrollment, and attendance. Those are critical components that we have to import on every single month. And then in the center, of course, our goal is bond job. So let's see here, inclusive leadership. So the whole point of us coming together as a, as Deborah Berry, former director, would say, is like we're a three-legged stool. As I mentioned, management team, they're at the top, day-to-day activities. Policy Council helps us determine our program direction. Governing body, you all, fiscal oversight, legal oversight. These three entities work together. All right. So while we do work together, it's an inclusive process. Ultimately, responsibility lies with you. So let's talk about structure real quick. We're a federal program, so all the work that you do is guided by the Head Start Act. That's available online. About it. And although we do it on an operations level, it's guided by the Head Start Program Performance Standards. There's lots of them. We used to joke, I don't know how anybody came up with this number, we used to joke and say, there's 800 performance standards that we have to follow. I don't know that anybody ever counted them. There are lots of them. And they're a book. And actually, they come in a book just like this. They don't print it anymore. It's available online. But that's what guides our way. Here's a slide just, because Amy, I think you asked this earlier, how many Head Start programs are similar in speech systems? You can see that here. Our hospice is PPS, one of the public schools. And we're one of 473 across the country that have a district as their grantee. And ours, actually, ours is an original grantee. So we're an original Head Start program. When President Johnson created Head Start, back in 1955, PPS got a Head Start program. So we're an original grantee. It's been in existence for 56 years. And it's kind of something we're proud of, just because been around a long time.
Spoken as a multi-council meeting.
Yes, Deborah Berry.
And she was one of the original people.
And she started in 1973. And we'll see her tonight at the end time.
Great.
Yeah, yeah. And you can see a lot, lots, most Head Start programs are associated with private, professional companies. But we feel really good and lucky about our partnership and glad to be a partner with you. So again, Venn diagram here at the top, governing body, that's you all, legal and fiscal. Policy Council down the lower left, helps set the program direction. Management team, overseas day-to-day. And of course, what this does is provide leadership and strategic direction. We'll see this draft multiple times, just to scaffold the goals and responsibilities, just so you remember, oh, yeah, that's right, we're responsible for fiscal, we're responsible for legal, and this is what Policy Council does, this is what management team does. Amy asked a very good question earlier tonight about, so it says here in the document that I gave her from the Head Start Act, we're supposed to have a fiscal expert on the board, an education expert, and an attorney. That is true for most Head Start programs. We're able to claim an exception because you are an electorate. So you're elected by the public and those expertise come from the departments that exist within the school district. So just so you know.
Because I was like, I'm going to have to go back to law school.
Yeah, I know. So let's talk about some processes. So what does this look like? You know, what do you mean, Robert, when we're responsible for this? How do we communicate with you and the Policy Council? Well, down along the left are just a variety of activities that may happen during the school year. Everything from developing bylaws, applying for grants, providing leadership to the direction, program performance, all of that. It generally starts at the management team level. So we create policies or amend policies, we get ready to apply for grants, and we vote procedures. Then we send all of that to the Parent Policy Council. So I attend, so does Leann and Nancy, monthly Parent Policy Council meetings and make sure, we just elected a new board on October 16th. I'll show you who those folks are. That was great fun. And they review and approve everything that we put for them, or they question and deny and say, I'm not sure about this, before it comes to you. It has to go through them before it comes to you. And so then they send, I help them send, everything that they approve to you for your review. And your job is to make sure that they have approved it first. And then you say, you give your say on it before it can actually happen. So that's essentially the nature of our relationship. We communicate back and forth. Here are just some slides on examples. We'll have to skip over some of this time, kind of give you some examples. I know some of you are experienced, some examples of what that means. What you'll see next week, I will say that next week, I sent a packet through Dr. Glasgow and Dr. Proctor that will be before you do next week in your business agenda. And it's four things. I need their chair signature, our certifications for governance and leadership, and health and safety. That's a federal requirement. I need to upload that into the system once I have it. And then I need your approval on our program self-assessment that we completed in May, June of this year. A copy of that will be included for review. And then lastly, I don't remember what the report is. Isn't the budget report? I think it's separate. There's another signature we need. We need lots of signatures. So that's a big process. But I also want you to know that I sent electronically about 10 different reports, a revenue information report, annual report, self-assessment report, community needs assessment. These are things that we have to do annually, and I just want you to have them because you're supposed to have access to them. And if you want to know more about our program, I'll need you to flick through one of those reports and you can see. Well, how do we determine what community needs? Well, we hire PSU to help us develop this report. We look at their recommendations and that helps guide the direction that we set with Policy Council. So I personally find it a wonderful process. I love this program. It's, it's just so comprehensive. There's lots of accountability measures. Here's our program planning for the new improvement cycle that we follow. Starts at the top there with our community needs assessment, as you can see in the red. And then that pushes us to develop our five-year goals or update our goals annually, which we have, and I sent as well electronically. And then we create our budget and action plan. And then we do, okay, so we implement the plan, we analyze and assess for progress, and then make course for corrections if we need to, and then continue along and so forth. That's a five-year process because that's the life of the federal test cycle. So that's the process we follow for that. And then we come to relationships, right? Through communication, we're trying to be as communicative with you as possible through Policy Council. Any of us are very willing and able to come to a board meeting to answer questions. Our Board Liaison is also a great conduit of communication, directed the past, served in that capacity last year for us. So you have two board members on.
Did you do it for two years, Michelle?
I did.
Yeah, so two years.
Very relaxed.
Lots of experience, lots of experience. But again, I'm very available anytime for questions. But I want to give you a sense for who our management team is. So coming to sort of the end of our presentation, we're on time. Oh, we're doing great. I'm watching.
About 25 minutes or so.
Yeah, great, great.
So I'm about 50 washings.
Yes, I expect nothing less.
Just kidding.
So here's our management team. So there's me, Director, Leann, Paula Zaninovich is our mental health manager, Susan Fidel is our inclusion manager, and then our four assistant principals or education supervisors. They are located at our large centers. So I'm power Dr. Chenko, Dr. Tom Galloway, Jason Pell, Nancy, our Business Operations Analyst, and then we have Andrea Murphy, our data management coordinator. Jane Mordani and Keeney are our two nurses. Leanne Van Winkle has been a contracted registered dietitian with us for a long time, who helps us with compliance with all those standards. And then Nadia Sanchez-Pere is our extraordinary administrative assistant. So this is our management team. We meet every other week. We haven't been weekly up until recently. We just kind of front-load and then back-load as we need or increase our meetings if we need to. Come, it has really increased our frequency of meetings just because there's lots to navigate, decisions to make. But as I mentioned, so this team then works as one of the legs of the stool. Here's our Parent Policy Council. Last year's officers were these folks. I have to say, I was really nervous and unsure whether we'd be able to elect a board during virtual learning. And because we were also only at 50% enrollment, we reduced our enrollment to meet health standards, right? Because we went back in person, so we capped every class at 10 students per class. And that really reduces the pool of parents who could be engaged. And these folks stepped forward and did an absolutely fantastic job. We didn't miss one meeting. We always had a quorum and we got our program plan implemented. And it was absolutely wonderful. And a lot of these folks are doing great things. Donald is finishing his master's degree. I think he works for PPS in some capacity known. Shirley Paul has come back as a community rep for us.
She is amazing.
Isn't she amazing?
She just like ran the vote and was incredible.
Yep. She is a live wire, brand-new baby, five months old.
Yeah.
Brings her to the knees. And just is great. It's great to have her back as community rep and we can't wait till her little one comes, Head Start student as well. And Christiane, moved out of state for a job and Kim's coming back too as a community rep. She can't wait to go back in the program too. And then Renee's child is now kindergarten, so Robert's. Anyway, so I've had a great board. I do want to share with you a short clip. Deborah Berry is a former director of this program, so you may recognize her. And she enthusiastically accepted my invitation to come and guest speak to our Saturday, October 16th, board training election to give the history of PPS Head Start. We do this every year. And I was so taken, we were all so taken by Deborah and her 15-minute speech. She just did a great job giving perspective. And as we just mentioned, she was an original teacher in 1973 and was with the program for a long, long time. But I do want to, I want you to hear her talk about how important Policy Council is and how she was really trying to motivate parents to run for office. Because we had a small group of parents at this meeting just last week. And, you know, it was like, we almost had like just enough parents to fill like every single executive seat. And I thought, well, we might have to go vacant with some of these positions. But here's Deborah. Okay, what do I do? Turn this on? So Terrell?
Yeah, come in.
How's this going to work? Where is it going to work? Because how's it sound?
Did you just hit your arrow by your, oh.
Should I? Okay.
No cares.
Yeah, there is a way of avoiding it.
So should I keep my computer, my laptop muted, sound off, or turn the sound off? We can try it a couple of ways.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that works. You want me to try it?
Yeah, give it a shot.
Okay.
Do you have it not in this Zoom-length presentation?
I have it. The video is on my laptop and it's embedded.
It's because we're in the same room.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize.
That's okay. So we'll just skip. She just did a great job.
Can you put, like throw up on an internal website and we could link to it? Because it was, it was one of the most moving, incredible, just telling the story of what it was like in those early days and her dedication to the students of Portland and sort of the spirit of what Head Start is.
That's a great way of putting it.
Or you was impressed with the way that their elections went? Because I was, two years ago, I was in the film. I was like, two people won one spot and it's like one person, we take it. Just so, just like the school board. It was just so, it was so beautiful to witness how it's just.
And Deborah is such a great story, Deborah. I think that's why I would also congratulate her. She's just so real, authentic. What she's saying now is, you know, Head Start has been around for 56 years. I hope it's around for another 56. And I hope I'm around to see what it's like 56 years from now. She just did a really good job.
She had an amazing stint as a head principal, too.
Yeah, yeah. And I know she's coming back to work part-time for the district to interview for her subs, sub-acting.
That was great. Wow.
So she's not, she's not done.
There's no leaving PPS.
There's no leaving.
Yeah, all right. Here we go. Let's see if I can. It's all right.
While you're doing that, can I ask a question?
Please.
Given how many English-language learners you have in the program, do you have any dual-language classrooms?
We do. We have, right now, we have three, three Spanish DLI. I don't know if you remember, but we got permission from Policy Council and then from you all to open an articulated Spanish DLI pre-K at SITN, and that fed into SITN's DLI program. So we have three, one at SITN, one at Clarendon, and one at Sacramento. So we have three. We're talking about maybe looking at Vietnamese and other languages that we have in the community. There's a lot of groundwork that needs to be done, a lot of research, partnership, yep, there's that too. You know, we have to be strategic geographically because of where our parents live. But yeah, that's a, that's a big part of it.
And there's a Native American Head Start, is that through PPS or is that?
So we have at least two of those classrooms, culturally-specific Native American classrooms, one in Head Start at Applebee's and one on the pre-K side, Preschool Promise over at Boggy.
We have a Native Montessori classroom at Boggy, and that's one of our Preschool Promise-funded classrooms, and that actually now is a three-year program, including kindergarten this year for the first time, which is really exciting.
If y'all look at this slide, that top name may be familiar if you read your board packet when it's going to be one of the, concerning RC, DRC.
Yes, I noticed that. Oh, she mentioned that in her case.
If we read our board packet.
That was great, Julia.
That was a big question, mate.
Start with, y'all remember.
So speaking of the board packet, I don't know, I'm going to ask, are you through or not?
We're just about.
Okay, I'll wait till you finish.
Okay, we're just going to go quick. So here's our, here's your, our new executive policy council members. Lynn is our chair in the group. Erica will be vice chair. Matt and Kate, Kate was not present, so Matt voluntarily helped me out when I'm not there.
Married couple.
Yes, exactly. And then Mariela is our treasurer. Jennifer is our state rep. And these are, the state rep is a key position because this position really has to go to the state meeting. And that state meeting is coming up November 3rd through the 5th in Salem. And they get the opportunity to run for the Oregon Head Start Association Executive Board. So for parents, this is an opportunity to kind of take a broader view and get a sense statewide and potentially assume some leadership roles in the state. Because we just make sure we're elevating the voice of the parents in this way. Shirley's coming back and Kim's coming back, just like you. Yes, yeah, Renee ran and was on the state board. Yeah, so one of our folks got elected to the executive board last year. So it's great, it's great fun. Good opportunity for them. And there's Kate Rochens on the left, the middle one. So she was our treasurer last year and is coming back as a community rep. All right, let's see. And then, so as I mentioned, we already kind of talked about this, but we had our first meeting after the election on Saturday. Right afterwards, we had our first meeting. Right afterwards, we had our first meeting, so we went through an official agenda. They practiced Robert's rules of order, and we passed the directors' report, the treasurer's report, took action on a few things. So it went really well, Winn did a great job. And that's a slide I can't show because that's also a video. But this was the story that Deborah told about teachers having to cook breakfast. She said, when they started in 1973, each teacher was given electric steel, and they had to make breakfast. And she said, oh, we cooked eggs and sausage and there's toast, and, and we made breakfast for the kids. And she said, it was a glorious day when the district offered the nutrition department. And all the meals just showed up. But that was a great story.
Yes.
Anyway, so that's, that's the end of the formal presentation. Julia, if you have questions or if anybody has questions, feel free to ask us. We've got some time, it looks like we've got at least five minutes.
I have one question back, this is like a broader contextual one, I was coming back to the first slide. So preschool for all, I think made people think that we're gonna have preschool for all. What's the delta between, say if we get the grants that we're applying for to preschool for all, and then all of our other programs? What would be the delta between what we think we need to have and what we actually have? Because it's, it's actually preschool sort of for all, right?
Yeah, and I can share with you some actual data on that from preschool for all if you're interested. They've done pretty wide, you know, county-wide assessment of where the need is. The idea is not that the public school system is going to provide preschool for all. The idea is that everybody in Multnomah County is going to have accessible preschool that works for them and meets their family's needs through a mixed delivery system, right? So we will be a provider. There are lots of local providers, center-based providers, home-based providers, and then there are still families that are going to opt for private care, and that's okay. The idea is that everybody has access over a 10-year span, right? So I'd be happy to send you guys sort of some slides that they've developed that show out the graph of what that looks like.
Yeah, I guess I'm less concerned about, like, I guess like who provides it, I don't know, it's a content piece of Head Start, but more, so like, are there going to be, continue to be gaps that we're concerned about? Like, people who need or want it, and it's still hard.
I think in the short-term, yes, over the 10-year period, the idea is no, that all those gaps are being filled so that anyone who wants it can access it in the type of delivery model or the type of provider that they would seek it. But again, it's a, it's a long-term plan, and it relies on all these funding sources. Like, it relies on maintaining our Head Start programs, on maintaining our preschool promise programs, maintaining our private programs, and then building continued access to pre-public programs. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah.
And it's going to take, as we kind of explain, that relationship of coordination, right? We're going to work together as a team to make sure that we make this as accessible as possible to its community.
Another question, this is more just like a governance or process question. So all my years on the board, I haven't quite mastered, like, it's always like, oh, you've got something from Head Start to read through. And I'm wondering if it's possible, and I know that there'd be like some one-offs of the signatures or on some things, but I wonder if it's possible to get like just sort of a governance calendar to overlay, kind of like you get a budget calendar? Because there's so much going on, and so just being able to have a, because I think about like, oh, we're responsible for this. If people have like a coherent view of, hey, at the beginning of the year, we're gonna be doing X, Y, and Z, and then.
Yeah, so you know what to expect, and then you can see kind of the year-long plan.
Yeah, I mean, I love the material because they're always like so parent-based and.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we're actually developing something like that. That's where it's, we're trying to get a grip on this, there's so much in one year. We'll try to put something together that makes sense for, for the board. So you can kind of sense, oh, at the beginning of the year, we should expect these kinds of [inaudible 0:11:01]. Self-assessment report was done in June, so see that fall, pre-bath, you know, that kind of stuff, that makes sense.
Yeah, like a budget calendar is kind of a good example, because some of the things are like, this is just an inform. Like, you're just going to get information, and then these are things you actually have to do something, like take some sort of action because of our responsibilities. It just makes it easier, then you can overlay that with all the other things that we have.
Yeah, sure, yeah, okay. Sounds good, we'll try to put something together. What else?
I have one question. You mentioned there, it was that you guys went down to 10 students last year for the COVID. But how do you guys see now and forecasting, we look at those numbers, it's going up?
Right, so we align with the district this year on the full reopening. So when that was announced, Emily and I chatted and said, all right, it looks like we're reopening at full capacity. And that coincided also with a message from the Office of Head Start. We want all programs to consider fully reopening within your local conditions, if you're able. And so we currently are actively recruiting in a way for our full capacity at 760, which is approximately 20 students per class at full day. And Rhiannon, do you want to share where we're at?
We currently are about 420, so we still have about 340 left to go. We're, like Robert said, actively recruiting to fill those spots. We have, the Office of Head Start has said we have until January 1 to be fully enrolled, so they're understanding that all programs across the nation are kind of struggling with this, getting back to whatever, you know, normal looks like. And so the family service work team that I supervise, that is our number one workload right now, is recruiting and enrolling as quickly as we can to get kids to classrooms, so.
So we're just north of 50%, about 54, 55%. And when I check in monthly with our region 10 specialists at [inaudible 0:15:33]. And the state, certainly within the region. They say, you're aligned with everybody else. Everybody is experiencing the same challenges. Families are sending medicines to their children, unvaccinated children, together, right? And so everybody's sort of in the same boat. And just to clarify what Rhiannon said about the Office of Head Start, is they said, we're going to give you a grace period, they've been giving us grace all through COVID, like starting in January 2022, then we're going to start assessing you for full enrollment. If you're not at full enrollment, then we're going to help support you, like, what do you need? How can we help you get to full enrollment? Because there's usually a, an accountability system to do that. If you're under the will, that means you're really not using all the federal funds that you've been given. And so you might need to give some money back if you don't get to full enrollment. And so they said, starting in January, you can start that process. That process is very long, it isn't that you have to be at 760 on January 1, but we're really working towards that. And just to let you guys know that at the directors' meeting last week for OHSA, there's a, and I think we're not the only state, because there are petitions now that are going to be sent, saying, you know what, we need more time, there's no way we're going to get there. Other Head Start programs, unlike ours, like again, we feel very lucky and grateful. Are experiencing facilities issues, significant staffing issues. They just, they can't open classrooms because they don't teach. We have not lost one teacher for any day, we're doing really, really well, and so we can hope. And we're ready for all of our kids, all 760 to come out. So we're in a good position, but there is, there is a particularly petition to kind of further play that.
I think the other element that contributed to this year's slower enrollment is that last year, because we did the half-capacity, we only enrolled four-year-olds. And so all those kids matriculated to kindergarten this year, or the vast majority of them, which meant that this year they were actually enrolling the full 760, where usually they're only enrolling half. Because usually we have our three-year-olds staying for a second year, does that make sense? So this is a much bigger enrollment push than Head Start usually has in a one-year [inaudible 0:16:33].
I wonder if we got some communications out about, my mother, my mother's in her 80s, and she, there was someone that actually knocked on doors, because there wasn't any three-year-olds.
Yeah.
There, there wasn't [inaudible 0:17:25]. Yeah, we got it, and we found out, I got the signs, I got the signs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They're on buses and benches and [inaudible 0:17:33].
I actually, I actually still saw, I saw it on the back of a bus the other day, and it's still there, we're, we're [inaudible 0:18:00]. But yeah, we have yard signs, we have, we just ordered a bunch of door hangers. We've got flyers going out at all the pantries and things come up, and Facebook and some schools, and the district actually has sent something out again multiple times, and we're connecting with their Facebook page as well. And also, I just have been reaching out with some of the other community area Head Starts to see if there are things we can collaborate on, because they're again, [inaudible 0:18:38]. So any and all outreach, any three- and four-year-old.
We have like important staff [inaudible 0:18:55].
I'm for a survey that's surveying to see whether this is advantage the fact that we went on the school year? Um, just there's, there's one or five, like, when you get to the summertime, it's either like complete panic.
Yeah, it was a full day, kind of a full day.
The length of the school day is also started.
For, for that population.
Yeah, I wonder if there's like some like gap closing, because it's sort of like, hey, it's summertime, you're on your own. I think we would repeat summer.
We're all, we're all in our talking, in terms of looking at Nancy's account and the child care system. We're helping place with our child pilot, so before and after care. I've known and learned from our Head Start sites, because we know families are trying to go to school and hold down jobs and need a one-day. So that's one of the things we're trying to do to mitigate the challenge of that school year, the school day. So yeah, it's, it's definitely, we in Albina overlap in the city, and Albina offers that extended day. And, you know, we offer, we offer different things, so we're attracted to different families. You know, but we do recognize that there's opportunity for us to accommodate.
The other thing we guys are piloting this year is, so I think in the family needs assessment over many years, it's come up that the longer day would be more supportive of families who are trying to work. And then the other one is the transportation, as a barrier to potential enrollment. And so you are piloting transportation at a handful of your sites, if you're right, to increase access. So I think these are the things we're trying to figure out around this gap, is why aren't the families who we want in these programs like coming?
Or are just COVID ones restricted and being sent, but they sent on the expansion hours for, for transportation?
So, yeah, so yes, there was, there were three rounds, I will say, of COVID flights. The first round was in the [inaudible 0:19:51]. And that was very restricted to things like PPT, well, you know, prepare for, respond to anything related to COVID. And then the second round, the comprehensive, the [inaudible 0:22:03]. We're the same, you know, they have to be COVID-related, ARP is a lot broader. So we're looking at things like covered areas and sites that don't have them, that are sort of COVID-related, but more long-term too. Like, everybody should be able to go outside, even in the rain, and be undercover to play and [inaudible 0:23:12]. The difficulty with the one-time plans are that if, you don't want to like try to do a long-term sustainable thing with temporary funds, because then, then it's like, oh, the funds are ending. We want to make that part of our base plan.
We need to do a quick [inaudible 0:23:30].
Yeah, that is, [inaudible 0:23:33].
I'm going to leave you with a present from one of our classrooms. Things drew themselves and then their friends underneath a rainbow. So what she said was, we are together under the rainbow, and we feel that way. Together with, with you all, we're in together, so I don't, I, I would give this to Roseanne, I think.
Well, I was like, how about bringing it up on that bulletin board at the top of the stairs?
We could do that, we could do that.
I will enjoy that.
I might have to just do that without spending the [inaudible 0:24:03].
Yes, do you have my information, the Head Start needs someone to put it on that bulletin board.
Awesome, awesome. Well, thank you for your time today, and my question.
Thank you so much, Julia, you're such a great program.
And learned something tonight, too.